Stand please.
Careful what you talk about.
Buddy to the agenda of the regular meeting of the City of Economic Development Subcommittee, June. We're going ahead and call the committee of orders. And I'm going to ask your finance director to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please join me in the pledge for a great country. For allegiance.
To the flag of the United States. And to republic, for which has one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal. And with semen natural.
No, 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 we're good. We'll move on to approve of the agenda. Are there, is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
I'll second, but I'm going to make some comments, I think. For the sake of this agenda. I, and next agendas. I want to make sure that. We put the items that we talked about on the last two agendas. On items that were talked about. Old business and that way we can see, and then we can also see. What the progress is on those old business items. Including what we are as a, as a, as a council. Because I want to, I want to be able to keep track of that. And I want to be able to set some deliverable dates on each one of those. And in particular, I'm interested in. Getting dates because two meetings do I ask for? A schedule so that we can go out and start doing some economic development hearings. Around the community. And I think that feedback loop is very, very important, but, but I want to see. Old business. And with that, all those in favor signify by saying aye on the approval of the agenda.
Aye.
Aye, aye, emotion carries no extensions, anyone? Say no. Very none, we'll move on to item approval of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve of the minutes of this? Agenda.
You don't have any on here.
It's on here, there's, there's no minutes.
Minutes.
Alright, so we'll move on and we'll move on, no presentations, there are none. Into new business and this is CGI digital video projects.
Alright, good evening, the item before you is CGI digital. Sorry about that. And so they, they do what they call a community showcase video program in which cities across the country get to. Showcase their very best through their assistance. And so, so they have been endorsed by the National League of Cities and the US Conference of Mayors. For thirty-five plus years, they've been involved with community-based marketing and advertising or creating advertising experiences. They have more than five thousand partnerships and more than fifty thousand business and nonprofit clients in the US and Canada. And so they have made a video, community-based videos for various cities and this one was about Lake Havasu City in Arizona. And so this is just a snapshot of, of their video. And what they are is basically storytellers, they like to showcase what makes your community unique through a series of, a series of videos. They want to educate and welcome future families and residents, they promote tourism and recreation, they recruit new business and industry. Display community pride and highlight economic vitality and promote local organizations and charities through their video making storytelling. And so basically, they, they do offer some video examples on their website where you can view any. Any past participant city, you can view their little marketing video that was put together for them. And in this case, this was for the city of Easely. And so this is pretty much what it sort of looks like, they'll, they'll have a series of logos surrounding the video and so as the video plays, people can look at. Some of the community-based organizations and other, you know, they feature small businesses that are. A highlight to this local jurisdiction, sorry, my mouse is not, I don't see the mouse. Okay. And so this one's for easily as well, and so they have like a little snapshot of what that also looked like and if you notice there's. A myriad of logos surrounding the, the video as it plays, that's what they would do for the city of Coachella as well. And so basically you have the freedom to choose your very own platform so you can target new residents, visitors and businesses. You can share on your social media platforms and feature the video tour on the official community homepage. You can also provide video tours for your chambers of commerce, economic development agencies, Main Street Association. Convention and Visitors bureaus and other websites that are out in the, in, for promotion of the area. And basically the program summary is that it's cost-free for all communities, they welcome new residents and visitors, they recruit new businesses and industry. Showcase community pride and highlight economic vitality and promote local organizations and charities through this video-making effort. And so they are available for questions and answers now, the city of Coachella has embarked on a journey with CGI digital and so they've already developed a script. A draft script that we will share with everyone and it's basically just kind of highlighting the best of Coachella. And, and it, and it's actually a thematic script, so the, the theme of the script is supposed to be like cheery sunny. Bright, you know, going with our theme of the city of eternal sunshine. And also they will be brought, I mean, um. Video recording the, the mayor for the video press release that will occur as part of the launch of this campaign. And that is all.
Well, can we see a video?
Uh, yeah, I'd have to go and bring it up. On the internet. Let's see. Uh, I think just type in CGI digital marketing and then it'll come up. Uh, okay, sure YouTube. I just, I know the. The Conference of US Mayors had like sample videos on their webpage. Digital marketing, I think it's. See if it's. Yeah, that should be them and so. There should be some videos that come up on the side. Scroll down, let's see. Say how did they're. Oh, click here for the. Video production, maybe that one. So I just actually not that long ago saw the examples and. Our video production process maybe.
Can you maybe show us when you're ready? We'll move on to the next item. And this is a development agreement with Land Rada specific plan. Bill.
Good afternoon, committee members, I wanted to, it's been a little while since we've. Been back to you to talk about our progress with. The KPC company. We were able to get the fiscal analysis and we met earlier this week because. There was also some talk about whether we're doing a CFD or an EFID. And I knew that based upon the analysis that was done by David Tausick that. It encapsulated getting one hundred percent of property taxes and it's a big number. Because it's not within a RDA project area, so it affects, you know, the fiscal outcomes if we were to do an EFID. Because those streams of property tax, if we didn't EFID would be. Taken away from the city and actually put back into the project and I know that the, the mayor knows about this and I'm sure. Council member that you know as well, working with the county and how they're talking about the Salt and Sea stuff, so. The other day I had David Tausick. Run numbers again where it. Took into consideration whether we did a CFD and EFID and then the funding and the EFID and so if you turn to page four. Have your hand up before you. Twenty-two million at the end of the project with no EFID. We're showing nine million dollars, nine and a half million dollars in public safety costs leaving twelve million five hundred thousand. For general, other general fund expenses, that's not just surplus because there's other services we have to pay for, we have to pay for code, we have to pay for animal control, we have to pay for parks, we have to, you know, on and on and on. So the total cost of those other things is almost fifteen million dollars. So we do have a deficit even without the EFID and so I backed into a number based upon seventy-eight hundred homes. Knowing that, you know, we had to make up that difference. Without the EFID, we're at about three hundred and fifty dollars per unit per year within the CFD up in La Trata. If there is an EFID in place and it takes twenty-five percent of increment and, and what hasn't been done here is now KPC needs to do an analysis because. At the end of twenty years or whatever with twenty-five percent or fifty percent set aside. How much is that going to generate for increment and how much can they go actually borrow? Knowing that if the CFD is reduced to three hundred and fifty dollars and we have a two percent cap on tax, you know, the ad valorem tax on somebody's, you know, house. We know how much we can go bond for pretty quick once a house is built on a CFD, but for an EFID. We don't know because it's going to take time and see, because there's a base year and then everything grows from that, so it's going to take a while before they can even issue a bond because their, their taxable increment, it's going to grow over time. Fifteen, twenty years, say, I've never been a big fan of the new EFID, CFD is the way to go if it's possible because you can get to your money quicker that way. But that being said, so. Based upon what I've looked at and what was sent over from Tausick. Of, of course, the first one, there's about a two point eight million dollar deficit, seventy-five, seventy-eight hundred homes, three hundred and fifty dollars a year. If we do the twenty-five percent EFID, it creates a deficit of about five point eight million or seven hundred and fifty dollars, so are. What we'd have to charge individuals for public, public safety CFD would go up about four hundred dollars a year with the FD versus without it, just at twenty-five percent. If fifty percent, it adds another four hundred dollars to it, so it would create almost an eight point eight million dollar deficit. The CFD would go up to eleven hundred and fifty dollars a year. That's almost what we're at. Now, even though this is creating more money and.
And is this for public safety or?
That's just for public safety, that's not talking about any infrastructure now, you, you know, when I talked to the group the other day, I, I told them you can't have your cake and eat it too, you can do the CFD or you can do the EFID. One's going to take away from the other, if you put more money into the EFID, the CFD is going to go up. If you take money away from the EFID, also the CFD will go down because more money is going to the general fund as far as property taxes go. So when talking to the group, they've asked that we keep our options open to where we consider all three within the development agreement, however. When it comes to forming the district, the CFD, we need to know which direction we're going, this will buy us more time, but they're going to have to decide which way they're going. It, either way, whether we leave it open with three options or we just give them one option. The city can be flexible, we know kind of what we're in for here, so they need to pick one, it's just instead of going with just one option, they have more time to explore their options.
So it sounds like.
Fiscal modeling.
So it sounds like you need more time, Damon, more time to look at this.
Yeah, because this came up in the last minute because we're looking at the existing, you know, when they went through and looked at the development agreement, they, they took the things that they liked and left them alone. They took the things they didn't like and wanted to modify them with an amendment. Well, within the amendment, it also said CFD or EFID, which caught my attention, especially when I got the fiscal model knowing that, well, wait a minute, did this property tax is a hundred percent coming to the city and it's not being shared with an EFID. So I need to know how does this impact us, so they finished it actually last night and so today I crunched some numbers and it wasn't that difficult to do, but. I, I'm okay with moving forward with giving them the three options, however, we need a, a hard stop as to where we decide because when we actually approve the DA. And then they go to advance their maps and annex into the CFD, we need to know what that rate's going to be, we have to know the rate before it's formed.
So should we also stipulate in there that it's either or? Up both.
Well, one way or the other, we're going to be made whole, it's just going to, I, I would rather. I don't know that it would work where you do both, I am with you there, I understand what you're saying. I just would rather have it where they can do their fiscal analysis and those numbers should prove out which direction they should go, I think it'll be a clear answer, I think that the CFD is still the way to go. By reducing the public safety CFD, being able to finance on the back of it and almost doing exactly like we did with the La Trata deal. We're going to do three bond issuances, we were going to get money for the city hall, there were things that are going to happen, that's still in the agreement and we talked to the doctor. Two days ago and he's still on board with taking care of the city hall and all that, remember we're supposed to get money after the third, you know, tranche of bonds to. Refurbish or rebuild or do, it's almost ten million dollars, that's still in here, so.
And maybe it's a good. Opportunity to just remind Stephanie and others. About what was exactly in. The. And I saw too, like what was, what were, what did we negotiate? In that development agreement. Like in terms of facilities.
That was it, we, well, in the fire station, the fire station's in there, we talked about that at the last Economic Development Committee meeting, we did not talk about city hall though, within the third tranche. They were going to take, La Trata was going to take the. It was the impact fee for government facilities, they were going to take all seventy-eight hundred homes that would pay into it and of course, they'd get a credit, it would be paid, but through that last tranche, they were going to cash us out for that so that we could advance building city hall. And it was almost ten million dollars. So it's a sizable amount, it's not, you know, we know what it costs to build the library. Now, I, I don't think we're going to get a whole lot done for ten million, but it's a good start. So, and then, you know, we could also change it to where it's paying for different things too, not just city hall, you could use it for a police station, you could use for. Other things. Well, we had. Well, no, it would be later after it was in the third tranche of bonds is what was in the original agreement and so we need to hammer out where we're going to, yeah. And it would still work in process, but also we're getting ready to the point where we're going to turn it over to legal to start looking at this. And then it has to go to the planning commission, I know that the doctor was talking about, they would really like to have this thing. Almost set by either the end of July or early September because they know we're dark in August, but they. They're still in the option phase with the La Trata development, so every month that goes by, there, I don't know, they're paying. Money, you know, to keep that option open, I don't know how much, but obviously they want to continue to paying that if they're not going to go forward with it and I believe they have every intention of moving forward, they've invested a lot into this so far, so. I just wanted to update the council, let you know where we're at, let you know about the timing and. You know, we can update the, the committee. As negotiations go on, just with emails, because it doesn't violate the Brown Act because it's just two of you, so we can get that out and it's public information, so if somebody wanted to know what we're talking about, they can always request it.
Okay. Alright, well, this sounds like an informational item.
Yes, I just got this last night, so it's, but it is a different wrinkle because it would, the FAD was in the request for the, you know, the, the amendment. We hadn't discussed about what that would do fiscally to us and so now that's been brought to light. So I, I don't know, Stan wants to add anything or I think that John and Brian are on Zoom, I don't know if anybody wants to add anything to that, but. That's, that's what I have for the council.
The John, is John maybe on there?
Yeah, he's on there and Brian's on there.
Hello.
Hello.
Ah, there we are. Mayor, council member. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, I think Bill's given a pretty good update.
Thank you.
We do want to move. Forward if possible and I do think that while we're. Having your city attorney review it. We can modify a few things, refine a few things, but. I think there, you know, the EIFD is a fairly new concept or new tool in the economic development toolbox and. This is because there's, there's really no. Development out there right now, this is the perfect project. To, to implement an EFD if we can. But we just kind of need to work through a few other financial assumptions. And if it, if it makes sense, you know, we'll, we'll take it forward, if it doesn't, we'll. Revert to the CFD model that Bill is familiar with and happy with.
I, I, you know, the. Maybe you guys know how to get to folks at the county, but. You know, if, if this EIFD has an opportunity. Perhaps the idea would be. That the county could participate. And. Leverage that participation to build affordable housing. You know, so. That might be an avenue. For them. You know, and, and maybe if they're interested in continuing to build affordable housing.
And they're. You're, you're absolutely totally in sync with our thoughts as well, we, we wanted to kind of get through. This stage and then approach and basically check the appetite of the county to do exactly what you just said, so.
There, there was a really good. Uh, I know we're not, you were not using. We're using David Tausick, but. What's the other? Uh, former city manager that formed his. He has a little financial group, he, he does EID analysis.
No, Delamas?
No, the.
HDL?
No, 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 I'm talking about a.
I keep that right?
No, 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 not Frank, I'm talking about a. Cosmo.
Oh, Larry.
Cosmo, okay, Cosmo just did an analysis for C-VAC. And there's, on the last. Executive committee meeting. There is a really good analysis on EIFDs. And potential options that could be available. To fund affordable housing. And I would suggest that this group takes a look at it and. And that there's a conversation that, that says, hey. In the event that we build a new community. In which county you have no. You're, you're really making zero because a lot of. What is out there is. Belongs to the desert tortoise and the. You know, well, I don't want to even say that, it just, it just sand dunes. And there's no new, there's no. No. Huge property assessment, but in the event we, we, we really get, you know, a net new value out here. Would you be willing, because the city's working to build this area out. Willing to pledge a portion of this money. To build affordable housing and infrastructure. For, and infrastructure for affordable housing, like I, I think that's a. Because right now it's a hundred percent of, of. Of nothing, there's nothing for the county, right?
Exactly.
With, but, but in this case. This is a whole new raw land. And, and. And and if the commitment here is to build out this area, the county is the biggest beneficiary because of the fact that. They're the ones that are reaping the biggest dollar from the property tax. Increase or tax increment growth in other words. So I I think early on it'd be worth, you know, a conversation with the county. And if that could be included here, why not? There'll be, you know, that's, that's not a bad idea.
That that was exactly our thinking.
Well, you you should read that report on the uh, Brian was gonna say that. I I know that's what he was gonna say, but but uh it's on the, it's on the C-VAG executive committee agenda.
I surprise on mute. No, you're you're right also because the county doesn't really have much obligation for services as opposed to the city in that area. So you're right. They they make out really well.
Yeah, so so but take a take a read at the, I I would suggest our team too, cuz it is a really good uh. Analysis of options that I'm gonna take a read at as well about how to fund future affordable housing. But it's it's good and it's all based off if EIFDs now they may push back and say. Would you be willing to share a portion of your increment to pledge to the Salt and Sea restoration or whatever efforts? A hundred percent of, I mean, we have nothing right now, but if we gain something.
And we'll just, we'll just have to crunch the numbers.
Yeah, so anyhow, okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
You mayor, council member. So with that, sorry, with that, then can we, I don't know if it takes a. If this is an informational item or is it take a motion to then forward it to the city attorney?
No, this is just an informational item.
Information that will will go to the city attorney and then the next stop is the planning commission.
TC, great. All right. Thank you so much.
With that, we'll move on. Uh, do you want to come back to item number one? Are you ready to show us the video? Yeah, that was a really good report on the executive committee.
Now, I'll pull it up. I had heard that they were talking about doing that. I'm interested to see how.
Emmanuel Martinez.
Oh, okay.
That guy. Yeah, but they're not. I mean, it's broader over there. It's it's to fund a lot of different things, but not just.
Is there a volume or can you can you um scroll down cuz I. I'm gonna link it. I mean, it looks different on my phone, I guess, but cuz if you go to media, I think it was Media Library.
Down, 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 right there.
Yeah, that one. And then I think it has client or our projects and then it'll have um. All the projects. There we go. And so you can select any one of those.
This is a cafe three ninety three on May, often for breakfast, brunch, or lunch, where we celebrate the tradition of good food and good company.
Man, we need to get one of those here. You know how often I would be there?
Make it, you're making us hungry.
But.
Cafe three nine three on May, where good food is all the freedom and share with good friends.
So that's an example of Main Street videos?
Yes.
And then what about a city video? Do they have one?
Uh, let me look. I was looking actually, uh, because they do, they do have um. City videos, of course, um quite a bit, actually. Um, just looking here, kind of scroll down. Do you see anything, Jason? Sorry.
Project.
Let me know. This is video.
Wouldn't be like municipal.
Yeah, that one.
Government partnerships?
Yeah.
Illinois musical league or.
We'll go to go check out Clarence Anthony there with the legal cities.
Hello, I'm Clarence Anthony, CEO and executive director of the National Legal City. I want to let you all know that NLC is very proud to continue our partnership with CGI Digital. CGI Digital is a longstanding NLC savings and solutions partner, providing innovative marketing solutions. That position the community for success in the digital age. CGI Digital creates programs that elevate our membership cities, towns, and villages and their businesses online presence. Folks, this type of sport is more important now than ever before. Whether you are looking to improve new industries, highlight diversity initiative, promote sustainability, or other best practices. CGI Digital Community Showcase Video Program is free and charged exclusively for NLC members. This is your chance for enhanced and effective digital presence. For more information, please visit www.cgi-digital.com. Thank you all, and thank you for your service and leadership in America's cities, towns, and villages.
All right, we get it. Go forward.
Okay, thank you. And the next item, uh, Jason, if you can kindly bring that up when we get a chance, is Placer AI. And whoops. Okay, I need to shut screen back. Okay, great. All right, so the item before you is about Placer AI. They are a top-notch insights firm that provides um. All sorts of information regarding your city, you know, traffic counts, retail information. Uh, I mean, they span the gamut, um and I'll show you next uh where where they go and what they do. And so these people, um, their their platform is very unique. They do some geofencing and I will show you some maps in just a moment. So uh they definitely offer insights for economic development, uh communities and professionals. Uh Ian Ross is their head of civic at Placer AI and he's the person that provided the sample presentation. Uh, so Placer in a nutshell is about spring travel and tourism, site selection, plan development, uh return to work. This was made during the pandemic. They're a Hirsion Entertainment Company subsidiary is what I was told. And so you can basically uh get insights to any place uh where they have a um presence, geofenced uh presence. And you can type in, if you have a subscription, like any place that you'd like in the US, and then it'll give you. Uh, a full report of what they, what what's type of data and information is available. And uh so they have over four hundred and fifty civic clients across the country, cities, counties, districts, economic development organizations, travel and tourism. Uh chambers of commerce, downtowns, conference centers, et cetera. And so how economic development leaders use placer da- data is as follows. They do retail recruitment. Uh, you get to discover retail demand potential, reveal leakage, target uh best fit retailers, uh drive revenue. They have event analysis. So for example, when we were at ICSC, uh Placer AI actually uh did a quick little evaluation of El Grito. And so it would uh it 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 basically uh by by doing an event analysis, you're able to see how you can optimize your marketing. You learn where your your audience is coming from and where they go next. Uh, you can increase sponsorships and vendors, measure performance and reveal economic impact. You can also do some sales tax estimation, and here they were uh basically appealing to finance directors. Uh, because apparently based on the insights, they were able to predict, uh, you know, make predictions, economic, um financial predictions. Um, but you know, I guess uh the finance director at the city of Moreno Valley, I think he said, uh uses their sales tax estimation tool. Uh, you can use Placer AI for business attraction, uh transportation, infrastructure, parks and open spaces. I did get to personally see how they give you uh traffic analysis information, like if you have a segment. On Avenue fifty four between Harrison or Sister Chavez and and Grayford Boulevard, it immediately gave you. Uh, just a number of traffic that goes through there and then where they went next. And so that's important uh for ATP grant purposes. Uh, they they also have some COVID recovery, uh ARPA information that would be relevant to those grants. Uh, travel and tourism, marketing and reports, and then they have support local business. They can provide customer journey. Uh dwell time, et cetera, optimized marketing to reach this uh direct customer or desired customers, pardon me. And gain insights into customer demographics and basically how they spend and and where they went next. And so it's really, really fascinating. And apparently there's no one out there that has access to this geofenced uh data. So the the ones that probably matter the most to uh economic development uh. Agencies or departments, I should say, is like retail, the retail recruitment and the travel and tourism. Uh, sorry, they circle COVID recovery and ARPA, but um I probably would have circled support uh local business. And so Placer, um, then they go on to show you examples of how they um help with travel and tourism. And so here they looked up Snow Basin Mountain and in Ogden, Utah. And so basically they wanted to compare Snow Basin to Powder Mountain. And so they uh pulled the reports and they were able to see how many people visited each of the resorts and um over time. Uh, so that they would know how many people, um how many visitors do they get? And then where do the visitors come from? So um they were able to determine, all right, so people who come to the Snow Basin Resort, they come from. You know, like that that area there in red. And so so that gives them a really good idea like where to market and who to market to. And then the same, they they did the same for Powder Mountain. And again, they analyzed uh basically, you know, just um the the demographics for for where, for the people that come from these specific areas. It was very fascinating cuz they have all of this information and um it you can pull this for anything you'd like. Um, so this is just one way, uh, you know, they they also added by zip code, so you can definitely pull visitation by zip code. Um, and then they tell you what the overlap is. If anybody wants to know, like, okay, so where? Where's there an an overlap? And so that way, again, people can know where to market to and to whom. Uh, and then where are they going before and after the visitor journey step by step? And so they were able to analyze prior and post. And that's the part that I found very fascinating is that uh you can learn where people are going next. And so the fascinating thing for us when we looked at uh customers that went to, say, Food for Less, we were able to see where they went next. And most people actually went to Indio to shop at um Winco and um and I guess like Bayartas supermarket. And so and then they tell you like where do they eat? So after they went to the resort, where did they go eat afterwards? And so they list uh for each of the facilities, like where people went. Uh, where did they stay? So you get that information as well. Uh, and so you can see, you know, on the map, like where they stayed or what have you. And what do we know about them? And so they tell you like a little bit about them uh there. And how do and what do we know about them as far as, uh, I guess, like you could say, uh, young urban singles? And they give you the percentages there. And then uh again, um Snow Basin compared to Powder Mountain. So these are just little examples of, again, how the kind of reporting you can pull from the um. Uh, website, uh, I mean, the subscription, if you have a subscription, where they stay. So here we go again. Uh, where do they like to stay? They they where they didn't stay? Where where didn't they stay? Excuse me. And then where do visitors come from? And then again, just, you know, you get uh, you also get retail attraction, site selection information. So if you look at that for for a public's uh grocery store, you can see how they give you all the analysis for. All the other choices that customers have and and how they behaved, cuz then it'll go into um. Okay, so what community shopping centers were there? How many people were going to, I think, sorry, I can't, these little letters are so small, but. Uh, basically you get a whole lot of insight, right? And then for plan development, same thing, they give you like a like a somewhat of a void analysis and they kind of tell you. Okay, so you are definitely in need of a, and then they give you a listing of all the shopping centers, for example, that could be a really good for Coachella. And they do it in a way where you uh can see that most of our people go shopping at Marshall's in Indio and then they go to um. Uh, like the Walmart and anyway, so they start listing like all the different uh shopping centers that people go to uh from Coachella. And then return to work. This just has to do with the, um, sorry, the pandemics. I'll just skip through that. Uh, but but basically very impressive and all of this, uh their pricing for cities is uh twenty three thousand dollars per year. And so I did try to talk to them about um bringing that down. And uh, but I, you know, I was just told that they offer this pricing all across the board. So like the city of La Quinta has. Placer AI, so does Indio, and so they charge them, you know, that rate, and so they they can't like lower the rate. Uh, but the insights, I think, are really well worth it if you really want to know. You know, is a Bayartas justified here? I'm speaking on that. And so you get to type that in and get that report. So I did try to get like one time report instead of having to pay twenty three, twenty three thousand dollars, but um I I couldn't do that, so um. Uh, so anyway, so I just wanted to present it and give the the council an option uh of uh insights that the city could obtain. Uh, there are other port purveyors that provide the same level of service. They just won't give you that. Really like nosedive into deep detail information because ArcGIS offers that. And so are other, there there's other people that offer uh the same level of service, but not. Quite like them. And so they're, they've actually created a niche market for themselves, and so they're very unique. And that is how they're able to justify the annual subscription, but.
Any questions?
I think I missed in the presentation, Selena, but how do they gather all this information again?
You know, they actually have contracts with cell phone networks, and so they get a lot of cell phone data. And also, yeah, and then other, they told me um some of the biggest names with information. So they they're able to get, they drop them everywhere, like.
Really?
The census and, you know, whatever. And so they have um. Uh, licenses with all of those people cuz they mentioned at ICSC that, hey, we were the only people that have that ability to draw all that cell phone data information. Um, and so without violating people's privacy, uh like names and, you know, but but the reason to see like where you went, then you find out. Any other questions?
All right, so it is, I imagine this is part of her budget, Bill? The economic development budget?
It the twenty, it wasn't specified within the budget when the budget was adopted now. So it would be a separate ask.
So you checked with your finance director and.
No, we wanted to bring it to you to see if you were interested in doing that, and then we would probably bring it to council to do a.
What, do you believe that this is a vital tool, analytics, in order to formulate an economic development strategy?
You know, um. I think it would be, but I think twenty three thousand dollars is a lot of money. Um, it's it's a lot of money. But um but I do think that the information you can get from it is invaluable. And I feel that um if we really want to make data-driven kind of decision-making, that that's the way to go. But I I think I I'm gonna really finish exploring the ArcGIS people cuz they're a little bit um cheaper. So I was thinking maybe I should check that out first and then maybe just come back or something and 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 present that as well to see. Yeah, let me come back. Yeah.
I I mean, look, I I. I I need, I I feel comfortable when you are are solid in your recommendation. And if you need more time, and you need more time to do the analysis, that's fine.
I'm gonna do that. That's okay.
I just have one more question.
Yes.
If you were so not considering the twenty three thousand dollars that it costs, but. Or if you had access to the program, what would you utilize it for? What do you think it would be helpful?
Oh, I'd be immediately looking at the event analysis cuz I want to know, okay, how many people came to El Grito, where did they go? And what, you know, cuz again, obviously, it's an economic development type of event. So any event that we have run with those Muertos, like all those big ones, tacos, tequilas, chavelas. And I'd want to check that out. And then I'd also use it for our grants. I would, I would, uh, cuz I don't have traffic counts, so oftentimes it's a little difficult to um get the traffic counts, like like that segment that I mentioned on Avenue fifty four. Between Harrison and Grayford Boulevard. So I just, you know, look at that and then I'd want to know, okay, all my major shopping centers, where did those people go?
Yeah.
And what was the percentage of people that went and how much they spent? Because Placer AI does give you those numbers, like it'll tell you, you know what? After they went to Gardeinas and they went here and here and they spent this much. And they'll and they'll tell you, you're missing out on all this money that you could have made, but because you don't have, you know, that that shopping center. Now you lost them to Indio. And a lot of the people actually went to Indio and La Quinta. That was the number two, you know, naturally. And uh and so um and it was amazing how many millions of dollars Costco is getting from our people.
Oh, yeah.
Millions. It's unbelievable. Like I might, you know, but uh so, yeah, so cost wasn't a factor. I'd be like, yes, let's do it. But I think I want to give the Esri people a chance to give us, uh, you know, okay, I want to see what they have to offer. Because they they claim that they offer like almost everything that they do, a- and they recognize I'm not placer AI. But you know, I will give you all of this. And so I just want to take a look at that and and see if that's a little less, because I I would like to do other things with my budget.
Yeah.
If you mind, can I ask a quick question, Selena? Does the the software allow to, if you propose a project, this give you kind of the impacts it has? So another benefit is we can put the hotels, see once that hotel builds out, it's gonna give us a little performer. If Vallarta builds a shopping center with the that the revenues will be from that new shopping center, so things like that, maybe, you know. So that that's probably one of the cool tool to have as well.
Did you say the twenty three, is that annually?
It's annual and it's unlimited subscription. So once you pay that money, anybody at the city can have access. So if people in planning and community development need access, they can get access, or Gabriel wants access, everybody, yourselves. Uh it's unlimited subscript, I mean, unlimited uh logins or whatever. And um uh so that's really appealing. And the guy actually did say he would be willing to work with us between the eighteen and twenty three thousand dollar range, which, you know, but then I, the proposal came in at twenty three. So I'm thinking he's just going for, you know, because he he really felt really bad. Because this is probably like the fifth touch that we've had with them. You know, because we've been trying really hard to just convince him to give me like a one of reporter. You know, and and they just won't because they they want to protect other clients who did pay the full price.
Of course.
You know, and and so we don't want to go around saying, well, I got it for twenty two. Oh, I pay twenty five or uh so, yeah, but.
Right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Well, when you're sure in what direction you want to go, come back to us.
Yes, thank you.
The next item is the economic development marketing strategy discussion?
Yes. Thank you. And this is really more, um, the item before you is really more about seeking uh direction from our economic development subcommittee as far as uh marketing strategies go. Uh because we definitely are working on identifying some really good ones. But we also wanted to um kind of consult you guys and and obtain uh direction and suggestions. Um so as you know, the the major things that we have to look at here for economic development is the business climate, workforce and business resources, transportation and infrastructure, taxes and incentives, and then quality of life. And so some of the strategies that I that we've looked at, both our public information officer and myself have uh we um have been around key messages, marketing tactics, earned media, public relations, our website, own media, like digital, social media, videos, uh paid media, collateral, trade shows, events, budget, um art metrics and direct outreach for business retention and expansion. And since the city of Coachella is actually moving in some very positive, incredible directions, like, for example, we're getting a pickleball court. Now, you might be thinking, why are we bringing a pickleball? But actually, um last year, we were uh approached by the Canadian Pickleball Tournament Association or whatever. It was some big thing, right? A big name. And they actually called us to be like, can we host a pickleball tournament in your city? And I said, oh, my God, we don't have our pickleball court ready. And so they wanted to do it more of a like a showcase, kind of like to inspire people to play, you know, pickleball. And so they were gonna bring these big name pickleball players and and come to Coachella and then invite the youth. And, you know, just again, to to spur in to inspire people and all this good stuff. And so um so I can't do that without obviously having like a marketing strategy. But I was thinking, if we think about our assets that we have here in the city, uh such as the pickleball courts, uh that is something that is very unique uh to us, but then also it could lead to a tournament, uh you know, and and which we showcase, uh you know, these big name uh celebrity players and and then we bring people out and it just becomes a really beautiful uh event. So I wanted to see if uh the subcommittee had any um specific request or suggestions. Uh uh you know, because I have a ton of ideas that I can go over, but I really wanted to give the committee an opportunity to to tell us, uh what more could we possibly do?
I I agree with you um that the way we're marketing or don't market. Uh there's a huge opportunity there. And I think social media, absolutely, you know, there is a huge, like, our social media right now i- is really kind of informative. You know, where it's like, hey, we're doing this and the there's this meeting and um uh, you know, you can go, like, we just did this groundbreaking and did you know that, uh, you know, the pool's about to open? So it's more informative, but it's not m- marketing. It's not marketing and it's not, there isn't a thought-out strategy of how to highlight uh the people, the the place, you know, and 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 the advantages of our community, right? Like, and I and then at the same time, I don't, there isn't a strategy as to who we're marketing to.
Yes.
You know, I I I I love that idea that you you're talking about regarding, you know, the the Canadian Pickleball Association. Uh I know we've been talking about other opportunities where there could possibly be a, like an international brewery or not a a beer festival. Like, so, so we 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 have to and I'm glad you're bringing this up because we had to take a step step back and 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 this, the the marketing side of social media is not being captured to to take advantage of our community for economic development purposes. I think we can do something. I I mean, I'm glad you're bringing this up, but it's 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 good. It it's uh you know, it should be really thought through. And um and then, you know, and and with some cool vigor. I I know, like, uh previously, I remember I always refer to Lori Williams back way back in the day when Lori was here and she she knew that it was important to market. She's the one that came up with Coachella. You know, small, small town vibe, but big, big city feel. And um but it it was just a really interesting way she was doing it, but she was trying to market our city where we were highlighting the 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 people, places, food, things, culture. And and I think from that side, you know, obviously, social media offers a a huge uh advantage. And I think we're also missing another um area of social media. And that's the the TikTok approach. TikTok has now become like extremely, extremely
Yes.
Um and it's like valuable and particularly amongst uh Latino communities. And we have no presence on there. And and it it'd be a shame to use TikTok to be like, oh, we have this meeting. Do you want to hear from me? As opposed to really kind of like use it for the modality that it is, which is a marketing like tool.
Absolutely.
And and but but all of that requires like this really thought-through strategy. And 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 the problem when the, and I think what happens I mean, sometimes what happens with our with us is its capacity, like, you know, and then and then sometimes what happens with us is that we want to do too much with and with 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 that modality. And and what we really should do is like concentrate on three things and just kind of
Yes.
Just hit them, what, you know, but but
Flagship.
Like, I I just, we gotta get a strategy like on on, I like, I like the idea.
I love the International Brewery Festival. Oh, my gosh, that is so unique. Uh I don't think we have one around here. Does anyone know if we have a beer festival? I don't think we
We used to have one, right? I mean, there used to be a, there should be a brewery festival, it should be called the beer and beer beers and brews and
Oh, that's right.
It was a
Brews and, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, it was blues, blues and brews.
Blues and brews.
Because it was music. And then and then it ended be uh because that was like a, that was, that was a Hagan event. It wasn't, it wasn't a uh uh an event for for Golden Voice. And when's Golden Voice took it over that there went the event? But an international brew festival in downtown on October, when the Canadians are here, or February, when the Canadians and Mexicans are here. That's called a good time.
I agree. I I completely agree, and I think it would be such a
Beer and Dos Equis, where moose beer and that could be bit of the interesting.
Yeah, and then imagine having like food and, you know, um people sell the little chamoy with that you can, uh, you know, um rim your cup. And anyway, just I'm just thinking of all the wonderful
Name a Canadian fush.
Poutine.
Poutine.
Is that how you pronounce that?
Poutine and and uh it'd be like fries and cheese or something like that. It's very Canadian.
And pretzels. Maybe you can do the Mexican version.
No, I mean, it's just, but you know, you got that huge demographic here. And we'd be like, I mean, this was kind of the bar at Augustine Casino. All right, so so look at the the bar at Augustine Casino's added like three Canadian drafts beer for the reason that they realize there's Canadian coming.
Yeah, absolutely. So we'll have to look into that and really formulate a a really solid, well-thought-out strategy. And I do agree with you that we um could hang on to three signature events, you know, so that we can really become
It's not, it's not events. It's not what I'm talking about. I'm I'm talking about like it's like tourism, it's investment. You know, it's a, it's maybe hotel, right? Like, you're 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 thinking about using this tool. Ho- ho- uh events is one, right? But so you're gonna, you're gonna create an event strategy, you're gonna create a a a tourism strategy, investment strategy. You know what I mean? And so you're looking at like how to use this platform to highlight the opportunity here.
Absolutely, I
And I think that, you know, you've run off RSP and see the replies.
Okay, yeah, so
I'm I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Yes.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
So you gotta get in there because, you know.
I know, no, you won't let me talk. I know. Take away this mic real quick.
Take mine away.
You have a hard stop, too.
So I think it's, I think it's a great idea to um and I see what the mayor is saying. It's not necessarily focusing on putting a plan together of events. But it's how can we utilize social media and all of these platforms to showcase the city and the community and the people that live here? So that we then attract other economic development opportunities. Um, and I think, you know, with our social media, I know we use like a lot of Facebook and and we use Instagram. But I think one of the things where we miss out on is the consistency. Is that we're not too consistent because we don't really have a plan of this is what we're trying to accomplish with social media. And then also, I mean, there's just a lot going on in the city. I mean, it's informative because that's just the way it's designed right now. But I think if we were to, and I agree with with the mayor, if we were to put out an RFP and see, you know, what we can get because um there is a lot of great opportunity here in the city. I've even heard from businesses like in La Quinta who are perhaps not interested in staying in the city anymore and other cities. And they're taking a look at, you know, Coachella or Indio, other opportunities and seeing. So how do we capture that audience? How do we capture that attention and showcase, you know, this is, this is the community that lives here? And here are um the opportunity. So um I agree, I think we should, you know, put something out there and see how we can create a plan. And also bring it back to the council and see what would be the strategy, what would the plan look like, what would be the priorities? Um, and we can go from there.
Yes.
I I I want you to stay in the economic development box. Okay?
Okay.
I don't, I don't want you to get into the public relations box of or government affairs box.
Yeah.
Yeah, and and because we have a public information officer publicly, like, that is her job. And if there has to be, if there's a conversation, maybe it comes here, and I don't mind doing that, where we develop a strategy for public communications and inconsistency on what we want to see, let's do that. Because because we're we're, we 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 gotta probably think of it as two different audiences. We gotta, we gotta think about it as as on the one side here informing our residents about what's happening.
Right.
Which is our public information officer, Coachella Valley. And then on your side here, this economic development box of how to attract investment, highlighting, you know, the things we just discussed. So so just don't just separate, stay in your lanes. And but these are tools. Like, like the social media is a tool, the the video that we talked about earlier is a tool, right? Like, those are tools. Those are all within the economic development, you know, frame and box.
Absolutely.
And so so if like, let's do that, right? Like, I I think that'd be cool as part of that economic development framework. I love the fact that, you know, they're they're highlighting Main Street businesses, you know? And and you get people to talk about their stories, but that's different than hey, you know, uh Public Works and Water Department is about to replace a, you know, a ten inch, you know, sewer main, might be a messy job, you know, if you look, it's just, you know what I mean? That's different than than this. Like, there's two different things, like, so so just, just kind of separate them.
Okay.
You know, but and so I just gave just think of it as two different areas. And then it's a part of your strategy, your guys' strategy and saying, all right, we're gonna develop both of these platforms and bring the economic development, or I'm sorry, the 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 public information officer here too.
I've seen even where the economic development has their own likes, hashtag or their own, you know what I mean? Like, but it's still the city of whatever, but it's, you know, and it and it's still, it could be like handled still by our PIO. Uh but then it would be like driven by economic development or what have you. So I've seen that too, uh but, you know, again, we didn't
Don't separate it, don't add more work to your, don't don't for your, PIO is gonna be with the, not gonna go under enough of your to handle this area, this box, stay in this box.
We will.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, but we quoted that. Thank you so much.
All right, with that, we want to put the comments. Um, uh, you know what? I I didn't add anything here. But but I do want to say a couple of things, um, and I want to just bring this to your guys' attention. And I pulled the city manager aside yesterday at the groundbreaking. Um, it's it's really cool what's happening and 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 people gotta just take a, you gotta see it happen visually right now. The height of of uh of, that's our Chavez now is is gonna drastically change. By that, I mean, you're gonna have three buildings that are gonna be how big's, how big's probably a whole building game?
Yeah.
Thirty feet, and then the next one's gonna be thirty five, thirty three, same like, they're not gonna be the same height, right? And those that are higher, maybe? Okay, but then you have, then on next to it, you have Guadalajara. Very, and it has a tall, tall height, too. And what that does visually as you're driving, it it's gonna take your eyes that way. You're gonna, you're, if you're a commuter, you're gonna like because now you you, what you've done is created like this tall height, like walls of height. And so when you come off that height, you're gonna come, you're gonna fall right into basically a dilapidated old buildings that that are very tired, old and have ugly facades. And so we should start thinking about a a pretty dynamic facade program that includes Guadalajara, probably just paint and signage. But definitely the mobiliaria, the dominoes, the church, the old um uh, I don't call it the old, the old church, the sold cannabis, the cave, the little cave, the the building that just lost its outside uh um, you know, shade canopy. So so and it's gonna happen fast. And and I'll show you an example right outside, right here. And and it in turn, in terms of the eye and what it does, beautiful library, beautiful bakery. And then you got this building that is like, wait, what? Like, like, what what hap- what happened to this? Connect, it stands out. That's about to happen there if you if you're not, if you're not paying attention, if you're not seeing what's gonna happen in in fifteen months, as they said. So that Guadalajara is a tall building. It's not thirty feet. It's probably, you know, twenty. But it's tallest on that. It's the tallest one on the block, used to be the But it's tallest on that. It's the tallest one on the block. Used to be the tallest one on the block before the apartments came. So we have to think of an econ- of of a facade program and we should really start to like. Just get there on both sides too. I like I like the the uh the new restaurant that just went in. It's packed. Those few people like the food there, so it's it's attracting people, but then. Then you get like the plaza where like uh uh, might as well cause of that. And you look at like the rainbow painting that he put like, or not not the person that owns it, like it's all this mismatched, you know. Confetti paint like, just look at the building. You'll see the signage is really awkward and ugly. Doc, the the poster building is really awkward and I think. So facade right right there. Start start really thinking through that. Yeah, I I really, I really, I really do think that that's it's gonna stand out, so we really need to kind of just focus in there. Yeah, at at least for right now, I I'll I'll put that one on the agenda. And then come up with the funny strategy. Maybe we start small, right? Like. So one of the things I I had discussed previously, you know, I. I'm a big supporter. I love CDBG, but we've been using CDBG really to catch up with the parks. You know, and which, in my opinion. Really need to do whatever. We do have the program that's coming. To invest in like upgrading people's houses. Which is another form of economic development, right? You you start painting houses, you start painting. You start painting or, you know, you you replace windows and plant trees. It's huge for economic vitality and economic development and just looks good, like your community, your says values go up. You know, but CDVG can also be used for facade programs. And it's a, it's it's got a diversity of of potential uses. So that could be a potential funding stream and. Maybe we tell the county like, hey, I'll sell a little bit more over here or something. I don't know, but but again, just really starting to think through like. What other community or what little, what other little areas would need a facade program? Other areas that need a facade, like let's concentrate there, but uh, cause as you get into like the. Past A and PM and you go to Coachelita, that whole way, there's a whole gap right there, you know, Chihuahua Market, all those other little, like those are old buildings. You know, and and it looks like they may be developing soon, which is good, right? Maybe. I don't know. I see the first sale signs all the time or, you know, business coming soon, whatever, but. Like the the one thing we don't wanna do is. What our neighboring city did like on Jackson Street. Where you cross the bridge and you got this completely new area. But the old town, the old town, the old Indian looks like. And forgotten from a number of different standpoints, landscaping, like lighting, facade. So as as things develop, we need to bring them up too. Cause if we don't wanna, everybody needs to come up and these are good little one-time general fund deals. Half a million and start a program, get like five units, hundred K each. Put them through. I think that'd be like a good use of one-time money to just up the neighborhood. Cause we have it, you know, like that's like like just deploy it. And spend some, Bill, we don't need to get bigger than the with the the fifty percent. You know, recommended average, we gotta spend some of this money.
For one-time spending.
Yeah, there you go. There's a one-time program. Put it together. You know, the cool little facade program, just it'll make a huge difference as. This thing gets up fifteen and fifty and those people would be, like that lady, the city owns like three of the buildings right there. One of the biggest complainers around, you know, but. But, you know, so say, hey, we have some love for you, you know, we'll we'll give you two hundred K if we do a solid facade program. You know, next, the other buildings too, like just spread five hundred K right through there. Little facades would be great.
Just a quick question, um. Do we know what the status is for that building right on the corner? Um, that two-story building that is just kind of sitting there. Um, I think that went to the planning commission a while ago, but I don't, I don't recall what what, you know, came of that.
Ga- gave you an update on.
I don't know if we can get it at the next meeting.
The Libra building.
So it's a big mess owns that building, so it's not gonna be the Libra. That's anymore. So it's sold. And he submitted some initial plans of what he wants to do with the building. Wants wants to be a restaurant and a bar. Uh, and do some rehab on the exterior. So we're trying to work with him on the design on the exterior. The inside looks really good.
He has indicated, he's indicated that he wants to get started this year.
I've had some residents ask and I'm like, oh. I don't recall what happened to that. That was a couple of years ago.
Yeah, he definitely doesn't wanna leave the building like that.
You know, on that note too. Couple of the planning commissioners, I I don't know where you took them. But they were talking about how some cities are revitalizing plazas and malls. And they're like, ranch market needs to be relooked at completely as a mixed-use opportunity. And whatever it is, you inspired them, so maybe you went to some conference and they're like. They're talking about like how. These old, these old uh commercial buildings can be repurposed and. And really relook that in in terms of as a new kind of revitalization. That's great, and that's gonna be a long-term kind of commitment. The price definitely with two or four, like she's gonna be here for twenty years.
And we should probably have a dialogue with these owners because I'm sure they wanna do it, right? And we have something to add to the table, right? If we're gonna reduce our parking standards, they're gonna be able to actually. Do more with their their site, right? That's potentially additional buildings.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure when the last time we had a conversation with uh.
I run into them all the time, you know, they. Always say, yeah, it's a plaza, but you know, I I've, I know that there's there's a lot of energy involved there. And I've just, I'm choosing to spend it also. Valuable, so but but it's something that. We should put on like on our radar and and just staff that just like send somebody out there, say, hey, reen- re-envision like. That'd be a good idea to re re, you know, kind of re-dream this place with me. And just throwing out those ideas that that we'd be willing to re-envision. They're gonna come, the first thing they're gonna do is they're gonna say. Oh, yeah, we need to put another pad, another commercial pad. That's not what you mean. What you mean is re-envision. The space and like that means possibly tearing something down to rebuild it to support the commercial. Right? And that's the, that's the issue now with big, look at what happened with in India with the Indian fashion mall. There isn't enough of a critical mass to support. The proposal, which is to try to make this a, like to try to attract the retail. What was it? Why isn't the Indian wall moving forward? Cause if you look at the demographics and you do the one mile, five miles, seven mile. Is it gonna be enough to support that retail? So in order to do, just cop this this deal, they have to reimagine. And we're not opposed to them going out. Three, four, little four stories, three, four stories, commercial to support the the retail. So that's reimagining that space like that is the idea. The other thing too, on the, as we go after the Avenue Fifty gets improved, it's gonna be expanded. We got that little gas station or little pump station that's right on that corner. Go offer them a facade, go offer them a mirror program. Do a badass mirror to clean up that wall. That is just, it's, there's a wall on Avenue Fifty that just. It's just a.
It's right next to the Jiffy Loop and uh.
So go offer them a a mirror program. That might be a good place to put the Mexicali mirror.
The old seventy-six building?
Oh, that, so sorry, uh, council member, we visited uh the the sister city chair. Neftali made contact with our sister city Mexicali. And and so they, she, he's engaged the mayor of Mexicali and we went out there. To talk to our sister city now. Probably now that that's happened, that the chair has done that, but he's the chair of the committee. He probably should come back and report to the council next meeting about all the things that are happening. And he will, just a matter of letting them know. But he he re-engaged that Metsicali sister city, which was signed in two thousand and fifteen. And and it's a longstanding sister city. And they, you know, we discussed a number of different things. And but yeah, so those are just throwing out ideas of like, hey, how to. How to continue the forward progress. The 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 one thing, the city is looking good. Like the the, I had a conversation with Maritza about. Making our corridors count in terms of like, gave the the. Would you condition upon the DR Horton project and how the medium looks at night? Nice, it's looking good. The issue now is that there's, we need to drive the consistency all the way through the corridor. And that's the conversation with Maritza, like, hey, what are you gonna do with the mediums? But at the same time, if you notice like on Avenue Fifty. All of the Palo Verdes that were down that corridor. There there must have been probably like thirty-five Palo Verdes, where we had this beautiful. Yellow canopy. Because when Oliver the flowered, it was yellow. They're all gone. It's all dead. And instead of doing this mismatched. Create another canopy. Of a more durable tree. And I suggested the orange, the yellow, orange tambachín to put it all through that corridor. So really thinking about how to beautify our corridors and and, I mean, that's. That's, it's economic development, but it's it's. It's related to economic development because of the simple fact that like you beautify a community. And you make it very attractive for people to choose to buy homes in Coachella. But you have to really, really think about like consistent. Just. Like trees matter. It's weird, but they do. There's a, there's an actual word in uh. In that's given, it's called Tree City USA. And, you know, you're thinking through like tree canopies and. And in the desert, it's actually linked to to uh. Sustainable and climate change. But the county just got a grant for a shade canopy study. Starting it out there.
And just to give you an update, Mr. Mayor, we are working on uh with uh Maritza and Andrew to look at the Avenue Forty corridor. To the landscaping plans for the wedding project to make it all cohesive and. I have in a fifty, or you know, we're doing the wedding project. A lot of those medians are in that area that you that you indicated and we're we're gonna try to redesign. That landscape planted match, so what you're, what what you just indicated right now.
He he upgraded the standard.
So, yeah, well, definitely.
And you gotta now, now if I'm the neighbor, right? If I'm the neighbor and I live in the other neighborhood. What about me? That's what they say, like, what about me? That's okay. Uh, that's 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 how like, our job is to continue to meet the demands of the community. So long as there's a community, there's gonna be issues and demands.
Gabe, can we also get an update on our street vendor ordinance? To see where we're at with that. I mentioned it just because I. Think some of us have been getting like emails from different orgs, just kind of interested in where we're at with that. So it'd be really good to kind of relook at that. And then, um, Selena with the chamber. I know that, I think this was sometime last year, where there was like a little workshop for the small business community or folks interested. In having like a small business. And we brought a few, a few organizations and I can't recall all of them, but even like a CPA and. They were kind of talking about, you know, different opportunities and how they can help. I'm just wondering if we're ever gonna do like, or if it's possible for us to do more workshops like that. Maybe even like on a smaller scale so that we can really focus on providing, you know, that one-on-one. But yeah, attention to to the folks that are interested, so maybe if we can put something together and engage the chamber and other folks and and bring them along and see how we can do that.
Maybe even add like appointment times it to. Um, you know, um, offer that personalized one-on-one attention, cause you're right, I think a lot of people left hungry feeling like. Oh, I really wanted to talk to SBDC. Yeah, certainly.
If it's possible to offer that in the evening, just just like we, I mean, that one was perfect because the time. It was in the evening so that folks were able to, you know, make it out of work and and kind of join.
Good, that's.
Yes, absolutely. So we have three of those that we're gonna be scheduling.
Thank you, Selena.
Yes.